This time, I'd like to go ahead and get the May 9th, 2007 Planning Commission meeting started. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. At this time, we'll go ahead and take care of Item 3, Acceptance of the Minutes of the April 11th, 2007 meeting. I see we have some revisions, a couple of minor revisions to the minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the revised minutes.
Have a motion to approve revised minutes by Steve Barrow.
Second.
Second by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'm gonna abstain.
I have one abstention, Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 4 is a public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on any agenda item that is not up for public hearing, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Ain't no one wishing to speak. We'll move along to Item 5, Public Hearing for Granting Approval to the Following Family Partitions, 5A, the James P. Amon Subdivision, Lot D-1 and D-2.
Mr. Chairman, Commission Members, my name is Bill Fiesel. I'm the Surveyor of Record for Joshua T. Snyder, and he wishes to subdivide some property as configured on the map before you. And he wishes to have a family partition variance to be able to subdivide it in the configuration you see.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Yeah, they say that this is a subdivision. Is it in a subdivision, or are they just making this a subdivision?
Oh, no, sir. When it says it's in the James P. Amon Subdivision, this Lot D, which used to be the lot before we were trying to have it subdivided into D1 and D2, Lot D was a part of a bigger parcel that was subdivided by a James Amon back in 2003, that came before this board. So this is Lot D of a previous simple subdivision of land.
Okay, then they don't have any subdivision regulations?
No, sir. This is just rural property, and it would be a simple subdivision of property, except they wish to configure it in the way you see, which doesn't have frontage on the public road, so that's why we're wanting to do it as a hardship, a family partition variance.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
What's different between the plat we received tonight? Are you familiar with it?
Yes, sir, I believe so. The plat tonight has a 12-foot utility servitude running along the south, and it runs only to the eastern limits of Lot D1. On the north part of Lot D1, there's an additional 20-foot private servitude of passage that is southerly and adjacent to an existing private servitude of passage. So those would be two items that may be somewhat different than the map that was originally submitted three or four weeks ago.
Oh, my God.
Basically, you just added the utility servitude to the other side.
Yes, sir. And we did not-
Southern side of the property and extended the servitude of passage on the northern side.
I don't have the map that we originally submitted, but this map is based on the comments that we got back from the engineer, the ERA, the Engineering Review Agency, and they wanted to have a 20-foot servitude additional to the one that was already there. And of course, you had to have the 12-foot utility servitude, and we put that on the south side of the property, instead of all three servitudes adjacent to one another. On the north side, we separated the 12-foot utility servitude and put it on the south side of the property.
What's the 15-foot servitude along the rear of D1? Drainage servitude?
That is a servitude that the parish always asked for. I would say it's ostensibly for drainage servitude, but I've been instructed over the years that I could not put the word drainage on there. It's just the 15-foot rear servitude that the regulations for Ascension Parish requires go across the back of a piece of property.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? If there are no comments or questions, we'll open this up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. There are no comments.
What was the comment you made about the servitude and why you couldn't have drainage written on it, because most of them do?
I've been making simple subdivision maps and family partition maps since 1995, and I've always been instructed, Mr. Bardwell, to not put the word drainage on these servitudes. But we always have to have a servitude across the back of a piece of property in a simple subdivision like this. And the back of the property is always defined as parallel to the road frontage. If you look at Lot D2, there is no 15-foot servitude across the back of that, but there is a 25-foot servitude from the high bank of that drainage canal, and that is obviously a drainage servitude. So I will tell you functionally, I believe that the parish wishes these 15-foot servitudes are held for drainage, but I've been instructed over the years to not put the word drainage. And I guess that lets the parish, it gives the parish some latitude to do perhaps other things besides drainage.
The reason I'm asking is because we've gotten into a lot of discussions lately about general-purpose servitudes. Michael, is that something that you can elaborate on? Charles?
The ordinance calls for just a 15-foot servitude. It doesn't call for a drainage servitude.
Other parts of the ordinance talk about swales at the rear of lots, but there's no correlation. They're written in separate parts of the ordinance, if I'm not mistaken.
That's true. But where the requirement is to dedicate a servitude, it just specifies 15-foot servitude.
And there's been cases in the past where I've had the word drainage on there, and I've had to take the word drainage off to get a map passed.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the Commission?
I have just one question. On the DOTD right-of-way, you have servitude by it. Why is that?
Because my research on this shows that the department never bought this strip of land outright fee title. They bought a servitude to it. So the property line that I show actually falls out somewhere roughly in the middle of the highway, which is where I had to calculate the area to. So these people actually do own out in the middle roughly of the road, subject to a servitude.
So which the Commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
Want a clarification, the revised map?
Sure, the latest map that we have, dated 4/30.
And you are also, I'd like you to go ahead, if you are going to make a motion to approve, to specify the variance.
Yeah, approve with the variance.
All right. I have a motion to approve with the revised plat and the variance by Steve Barrow, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5B, the Leola W. James property, tracks 6-D-1 and 6-D-2.
Clint Quintmaw, representing W.J. Quintmaw Surveyors, asking for Planning Commission approval on the following family partition of the Leola W. James property into tracks 6D1 and 6D2. We did have some comments from the Review Agency. Number one, is order for this division to be approved as submitted a variance required under Section 60.100-A of the Ascension Parish subdivision regulations requiring 40-foot private access servitude for one to three lots being created. Item number two is Lot 61 has only about five foot of access. In order to accommodate for these comments, we have adjusted the previous plat from 30 to 40-foot private access servitude indicated as railroad, also extending railroad 40 feet into Lot 6 Track 61 and 62 to accommodate for item number two.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Yes, was a hardship letter submitted with this application? I don't have one in my packet here.
No, and that's unusual. I do have the client here in case they would like to ask the client the hardship. But that is an oversight. I apologize. It rarely occurs.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? All right, at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
I live off of Patty Joe. My address is 104177 Patty Joe. I'm here, I'm representing myself and my neighbor next door, and the concern that we have is we don't have a problem with what's been brought forward tonight. The problem we're having is how is our water, our drainage, going to affect this here? Because right now, we're having some serious water problems over there within this small two inches of rain and stuff, and building the road back in there, how is it going to regulate the water flow and stuff? I have some pictures here from this last rain, not the whole total rain, just after two inches of fell, and I have, you know, it's a serious problem, and I just want to know how we're going to deal with it if that arises. We have a little canal in the back of our house, and then one going on the side. The one on the side is completely full. It drains across the road, don't go through the culverts. The culverts are plugged up, and with roads going back in there, is it going to move the water to a different direction back into my canal and hold up more water or not? This is a concern that we have. These are the pictures right here. I'm on Patty Joe. This is the drainage that after two inches of rain, this is what it looks like.
Excuse me, sir. If you would, show us the pictures that you have. There's the projector in front of you.
Okay. All right, this right here is that, it's a drainage right beside my property, and it's adjoining my neighbor's property. And this ditch here really needs to be cleaned out real bad. Two inches of rain, and that's what you're seeing, and what it's going to do, it's running, both our sewers dumping that drain, and after a little bit, it goes into my property and my neighbor's. I have another picture here. This is another picture of the same ditch, how it's filling up toward your left, right there. It's going into the neighbor's.
30 seconds, sir.
Okay. My biggest concern is if it's going to affect more problems with my drainage or not, or can it be corrected if this here goes through what you're all proposing this evening?
Where's your property located, in a relationship to the property?
My property is, I live right here.
Mr. Quintmaw.
Here, Mr. Chairman.
And this is the ditch I'm talking about, and this is my neighbor's right here.
Excuse me, sir. You need to address the Commission with your questions and your comments. Mr. Quintmaw is going to go ahead, and he's going to answer your questions by addressing us as well.
Okay, yes, sir. That's all I have, just concern about the drainage.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Now seeing and addressing the neighbor's concerns, my clients also share the same concerns due to the fact that their drainage is in response to the same ditches that that gentleman spoke about. As far as the road being built up, the road is mostly existing as it is today. It would just be a shell and extended on into the property. I did notice some heavy machinery down, and I'm assuming that the parish could clean those ditches, but this partition offers no impact on drainage of any type, and my clients suffer the same hardships the gentleman spoke about as far as drainage and the parish issues that that gentleman spoke of.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Quintmaw, there's a mobile home that's on the property line between 6C and 6D2. Yes. Is that going to stay like that? No, no, sir. Those trailers are to be removed. I probably need to go ahead and indicate that with an additional arrow showing that the client has spoken to me about those, and they will be moved. I'll make that adjustment to the plat.
How many are going to be removed? All of them, or just that one?
Certainly, I know because I questioned the one along the property line being encumbered as well as the one in the private servitude of passage to be removed. She has spoken about moving the others, but I made it a point to ask about those particular ones due to the fact of where they were situated with the property lines and the private servitude of passage.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
Do you have enough information to state the hardship?
I can certainly get, I do. Lack of road frontage is an issue. This was an existing track. Her daughter Patricia J. Smith plans on moving on to 6D1 and building there. They have an existing servitude of passage to the whole lot, but in order for her to get a mortgage on her piece as well as her residence, she needs to go ahead and do the subdivision, and then that is the point for the hardship.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners?
Charles, does a hardship need to be submitted in writing as part of this process, or can you speak to that?
It should be given in writing. They did explain to us verbally, and to be honest with you, it was an oversight on our part also not to require them to bring in something in writing. To be honest, I just forgot about it. But they did explain to me what the hardship was.
I will be willing to get something in writing to put on file as a condition of approval if that is requested.
I move that we approve the family partition based on a couple contingencies. One, that that letter is provided stating the hardship. And two, the mobile home, the arrows added to the plat pointing to, from to be removed to the mobile home, straddling the property line.
Have a motion to approve with condition by Mike Bardwell.
Second.
Second by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 5C, the Douglas R. Bourgeois property, lots B-1-A and B-1-B.
Asking Plan Information Approval on the family partition of Lot 1B of the Douglas R. Bourgeois property into 1B1 and 1B2. There were no comments from the Review Agency as well as the Planning Commission Review Board. We fall into the circumstance here. I'm shocked, but I do not have a hardship letter with this one as well. This is very unusual for us. This is the same situation of being the hardship is due grant Haley B. Wade a piece of property that can be mortgaged in order for her to have residence there on B1A, and Mr. Douglas Bourgeois would retain ownership in B1B.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
What are you doing? Say this again, you're subdividing a lot from what to what?
The entire B1, which is the extent.
Okay, you're going B1 to what?
To B1A and B1B.
And then at the bottom of the page, you got 1B to 1B1, 1B2. So I'm confused, is it BA or B1?
That is an error. It should be B1B, I mean, 1B1 and 1B2. It is mislabeled on the lots themselves.
All right. So B1A is 1B1, correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
There are no comments or questions, and we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, sign in with the Secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Go ahead and state your name, please, sir.
Sir, I'm Douglas Bourgeois. I own this property, and I'm wanting to donate the back portion of it to my daughter due to the high cost of property in Ascension Parish now. She just got married, and she's been living there for about six years now, so I'm wanting to donate it to her and her husband to build a home in the next year or two, hopefully, so they can raise their children there.
Comments, questions from Commissioners?
On the drainage servitude, is the reason why there's no drainage servitude added is because it's the front lot that's being donated?
Where's the servitude, which one now?
Or am I not seeing it? The drainage servitude.
There is a drainage servitude along the rear on the outside of the property on the adjoining Lot 2 existing. There is a nine-and-a-half-foot ditch there. Are we speaking about, is that?
Yeah, that's all right, Charles, that we don't add to it?
We felt it was up.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the Commission?
Make a motion to approve based upon the receipt of the hardship letter, like the last one.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Steve Barrow.
With also the corrections on the plat to relabel the lots to the appropriate lot numbers.
Second by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 4D, the Robert LeBlanc property, Lot BB-2-A and BB-2-B.
James Faughey, representing Earls and Associates, on the following family partition. Comments were made from CSRS. They were addressed, asking the Planning Commission for approval.
If there are no comments or questions from Commissioners, then we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the Secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the Commission? Have a motion to approve by Steve Barrow.
Second.
Second by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 6, on our agenda, public hearing for granting preliminary approval to the following subdivision, 6A, the Stones.
Ladies, Mr. Chairman, and commission members, my name's Jim Tatum. I'm with Tatum Engineering. I'm here tonight representing Brian Belzer, who is developing the Stones subdivision. The Stones is a 24-acre site located on the south side of McCrory 2 Road. It's currently zoned RM. He's proposing 25 single-family residential lots, and I may add that Brian currently lives on the property and will continue to live on the property after the subdivision is developed. We're proposing lots with a minimum frontage of 100 feet, minimum areas of about 20,000 square feet or a half acre, which is much larger than what's required in RM. We're also proposing a 27-foot asphalt curb and gutter street, underground utilities, subsurface drainage. We will construct improvements on-site on, through the subdivision for off-site drainage. Also, we're going to improve the, the channel, the basin of Muddy Creek. We plan to tie to the existing sewer treatment plant, which is adjacently located in Meadow Ridge subdivision. It allows us to build one less treatment plant in Ascension Parish. Wastewater Treatment Louisiana is the current owner and operator and has indicated that there is available capacity in the plant. So I think that helps everybody in the, in the area. It's going to be a very nice subdivision. It's a little different from most subdivisions being developed today in that he's providing larger lots because he has several folks that are interested in, in buying and living out there, and everyone seems to want larger lots. And as I said earlier, Brian will continue to live on-site. I believe that we've properly addressed all the issues and comments that we've received. I'm not aware of any outstanding issues or comments with the planning commission staff, with DPW, with the engineering review agency, or any of the neighbors for that matter. Brian has spoken with, with almost all of the adjacent neighbors, and it seems as though everybody's quite satisfied with what we're proposing here tonight. So I would ask for your support and approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Jim, you stated that you have answered all the comments by staff.
Yes, as far as I know, yes. Every, every day.
Okay, I've got one to us. Consultants should contact the East Ascension Drainage Works during the construction plan review process to determine a desirable cross-sectional cut along Muddy Creek to facilitate in future maintenance.
Yes, we'll take care of that.
So you are prepared to take care of that?
Certainly.
With no problems. All right. Michael, you had something?
That comment is really after he, this is kind of our conclusion.
I understand that. I just want to get that out of the way. Comments, questions from commissioners?
I just have a, have something I'd like to bring up. We've had some discussions lately in workshops with Fire Chief Mark Stewart about T-turnarounds and how hard it is for him and his, and his drivers to turn these fire engines around in T-turnarounds. And it would be much easier for them, much more efficient for them to have cul-de-sacs. And so you do have a T-turnaround, and just a, just a suggestion to try, is there any way to make that into a cul-de-sac for the fire engines and all EMS units?
Well, that's a, that's a good point. Certainly, a cul-de-sac may be easier to negotiate than a T-turnaround. And I guess the best way I can answer that is, this particular layout works better with a T-turnaround. It's a more efficient use of the property. And if it's decided by this commission or the council that T-turnarounds can no longer be used, then we'd certainly be open to making that change. But at this point, that's, it just works better with this layout.
Can you expand on exactly why it works better? Because I frankly don't see how it would have any effect on your layout. You could, you've got plenty of room where you could reconfigure lots nine, 10, 11, and 12 and certainly put a cul-de-sac in there.
Well, in terms of the, the lot layout, when you have a T-turnaround, it allows you, from a lot layout standpoint, it allows you to square up your lots, make for better building sites. When you go into a T-turnaround, you tend to fan, you have to fan the lots out. And we just felt like in this application that a T-turnaround was, was, was more appropriate.
Well, the only difference I see is is that the frontage of 10 and, and 11 might be a little longer. You know, you'd actually provide more, more frontage on the street if, if it was a cul-de-sac rather than a T-turnaround. So I, I can't, I can't subscribe to the argument. It just doesn't, doesn't get past me. I'm sorry.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I do. Jim, on the lots 17, 16, 15, 14, 13, 12, and 11, there's a dotted line for proposed mitigation area to the south and then proposed building pads on the opposite side of that dash line. I'm assuming the mitigation area is a no-build area for the homeowner?
That's correct. And that'll allow, when the Muddy Creek basin is improved, dirt will be borrowed in that area and then moved up the hill.
As a spoil bank situation?
Well, it'll be a spoil bank and also a building pad area for the, the residents.
So once the construction of Muddy Creek is complete, that could be a build area, could be usable by the landowner?
Not down, not adjacent to Muddy Creek, no. If, in the upper left-hand corner of the preliminary, you'll see there's a, a profile, a cross-section.
Yeah.
That's run through there, and we're going to borrow the dirt down adjacent to Muddy Creek and move it up the hill.
Okay.
That'll do a couple of things for us. It'll take some of the property out of the flood zone. It'll increase the conveyance capacity of Muddy Creek, and it also mitigates the, the impact inside the flood zone.
When you guys are finished with, with doing that mitigation, do you plan to do a fencing area there for your, for the homeowners or anything like that, anything planned like that? Or is it will be a homeowner-by-homeowner case?
No, it'll be a homeowner. That'll be backyards that fall off to Muddy Creek.
Correct. I'm just thinking about child safety and homeowner safety. If it's, if it's a drop-off going into a drainage way, kind of a situation.
Well, it's, this cross-section's a little bit misleading because it's distorted 10 to 1, and actually it's a...
It looks like a cliff.
It looks like a cliff, but it won't, won't be built as a cliff. In fact, I think the backside of it's a four or five to one slope.
Any other comments or questions for commissioners?
I have one more question. Is the existing lake tied to the drainage system?
Sir, I'm sorry?
Is the existing lake, is it tied to the drainage system or the subdivision?
No, it will not be. But it, the overflow will come out of the lake into the, the ditch that runs through the site. But the subdivision's not dependent on the lake for drainage. Just the property, the subdivision is not the property immediately adjacent to the lake is.
Is there a particular reason why you don't want it to be part of the common area of the subdivision?
Part of the common area?
Yeah.
Well, Brian lives on lot number five, and he's going to continue to own lots three, four, and five. And so it's a, for all intents and purposes, it's a private lake.
Sherry?
It's not part of the recreational amenities. It's not part of the amenities to the subdivision in any way, form, or manner, not today or in the future.
Well, it will be for the lots that are immediately adjacent to it, but not for the entire subdivision.
All right. Okay, so three and four, although he may own them today, they're going to go be simple sometime in the future. And if they, and if it remains a private lake to just that owner, then how do those people derive benefits in the future?
If they own three, four, if they live on three or four, I'm sure, I'm not following your question. I'm sorry.
You just said that the owner of lot five, the current existing owner, is going to continue to own lot three and four.
That's correct.
And that's why the lake is private. But you also stated that the owners of three and four in the future will, will have the benefit of use of the lake.
That's correct.
At what time and how do you propose for them to have the benefit of that use if it's not part of a common area?
When they purchase the lots, because a portion of lots three and four, in particular three, is on the lake, and four is immediately adjacent to it.
So if I live in the subdivision in lot 21, I don't have the ability to go to that lake and go fishing?
Not without permission.
Nothing wrong with that to private lake?
No, I understand that.
Is there any common ground or any common location here?
Such as a park area?
Green space, anything?
Well, we felt like that by taking of a piece of property that was zoned RM, which allows three lots per acre, this subdivision could be as many as about 72 or 75 lots, and it's roughly one-third of that. So making the lots larger creates green space and open area throughout the subdivision.
Sherry, you have a question?
I want to back up what Paige said about the T-turnaround and the cul-de-sac. When Chief Stewart called us at the subdivision subcommittee meeting, he let us know that that was very important for the safety of the residents of the parish, and that's something we feel very strongly about. So I want you to know that's very important to us. And in the future, I would hope he could make that change now for the subdivision, but definitely in the future, we'd like developers to look at adding those.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Jim, is there something else that you want to address the commission?
No.
As far as, if you would, would you mind having a seat, please, sir?
Well, hi, good evening. I live not adjacent to the property, but right across the street.
Your name is?
Jason Dodson. And so I live right in Meadow Ridge, right next to it. And we're pretty excited about the subdivision. We think it's going to be a great addition. It's going to look good from our subdivision. I did have one question, which is, the existing sewer treatment plant, are they going to tie right into it, or are they going to build another one adjacent to it to make it a, a larger sewer treatment area?
As far as we've been told, they're going to tie directly into the existing unit. There's not going to be any addition or another new unit built.
So the same one's going to be the same size, and that's it? They'll just tie right into?
That's, that's how we were, it was explained to us.
That's it?
Thank you, sir.
How's everybody doing? My name's Chris Fraser. I live at 17454 Karen Drive, which I suppose is on the west side of the proposed property. My main concern is the drainage that's in the canal right to the south of us. I mean, just through the past rain and coming up on any heavy rains, it gets to where it just about floods the bank right, right close to the road. So I'm understanding that they're going to try to dig something out and possibly allow a better access for the water drainage. But my primary concern would be the drainage backup if they're going to be building in the proposed area. That's, that's all I had.
Thank you, sir. That was it? Jim?
Sure, if you'd like me to address it.
If, if, if you would, please, sir.
Certainly. Mr. Pertwee with Wastewater Treatment Louisiana has indicated that there is adequate capacity in the plant, and there will not be a second plant built there. The second issue of the drainage, we looked at the drainage very carefully and, and reviewed it carefully with the ERA. We believe that making the improvements to the Muddy Creek basin and also moving the dirt from down close to the actual creek bed and bringing it up the hill allows for a, a better flow of water through Muddy Creek, and we ultimately have no impact. This development has no impact on, on the Muddy Creek basin. We can't fix all the problems out there, but our job, of course, is to not make it any worse than it is.
Well, I, I would like to make a minor request that if you could and would talk to Mr. Pertwee to see about getting a statement as to that there is adequate capacity to add these lots to the existing sewer treatment plant so that staff can have that on record.
We do have the letter, and we turn it in.
Okay. So you do?
Yes. I do have a copy of it. It may not be in this file, but I do have a copy of it. I will take care of that.
Appreciate it.
Certainly, they have it.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Michael, in your comments, you say he provided the letter, so you have it on file for the wastewater, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve, subject to a condition that at the end of J. Drive, the plat be amended to provide for a cul-de-sac with a minimum radius adequate to accommodate fire engines. And, and I do that to ensure that there's adequate access for first respondents and emergency vehicles to the subdivision.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
Can I ask that the condition be included that they contact East Ascension Drainage District during the construction, which was a, which was a recommendation of the ERA regarding that, regarding Muddy Creek, because that's a...
I would include such condition.
All right, well...
I'll second.
Okay. Motion to approve with a condition by Julio Dumas, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 6B, Weston Court.
Lester McLean with McLean and Associates. I have some larger copies of the preliminary if y'all would like to have them. We have addressed the comments of the ERA and staff. There was one, a couple of comments at the end regarding the contours were left off of the ones that we sent. Well, we've also, we put those contours on this, I just handed out, so we answered that.
This is a corrected plat?
Yes, sir.
Michael, have you had an opportunity to review this plat? No.
Can you put down the list of changes?
List of changes was contours. We just added the contours to it. There's a note on the, the comments that the existing contours were not provided in this latest submittal. And it's just that we had our layer turned off on the map when we plotted it.
Any comments or questions from commissioners?
On the south and, uh, east portion of this, lots one through ten, non-bolted, are the, are those lots included in this subdivision?
No, sir.
They're totally separate?
That was a minor resub that was approved, uh, several months ago.
And there's a note on the plat, those, those lots are not being tied in to the...
Well, that was one of the comments that we answered, that, uh, that we will extend the sewer to tie these lots in. With, in our construction plans. When we answered the comments.
That, that's not what the, the answer was on the comments. The answer was the existing lots, one through ten, are large enough individual systems and are not part of this development. Are you, are you adding to that comment?
Well, it says the treatment plants will have the capacity to service these lots, and service lines will be provided by the developer. Now, it does, that other part, they are existing large enough right now to have the, uh, individual systems, but we're going to go ahead and tie them in. I thought we, I thought you should have let that last sentence off, but I mean, we're planning on tying them in.
Uh, Charles, can you speak to how lots one through ten, non-bolted, got to where they are today? It looks to me to be a subdivision in and of itself. Uh, how is that, how, how do we get to this point on those lots?
This was two separate tracks that was submitted to the chairman for signature, and he can approve up to nine lots on a staff level. So there is no more than a total of nine lots that were created. And under the ordinance, that is permissible.
It's permissible because of the way it was done. We would never, never have approved these lots in this layout. And that's not your, I'm not saying that's your fault, I'm just saying, we would never have approved this layout.
Let me say this, at the pre-app meeting, there was a discussion about those lots having rear access and not having all those lots coming out to the existing public roads. And we highly recommended to them to do that, but they chose not to.
And it was the same landowner that sold the lots one through ten and is requesting this development of the subdivision? Same landowner?
The hey, the dev, uh, engineer would have to answer that.
I don't recall who the other landowner was. Yes, sir.
It just looks like to me that we're approving, looking at a subdivision here of what's supposed to be twenty-seven lots, but in reality is thirty-seven lots, and traffic and drainage was only done on twenty-seven lots, uh, so we're not really seeing the full impact of what this is, would become, should it be approved.
Tell them who the owner of the lot, who, who owned the property?
Lot one through six is Debbie Bro, and lots seven to eight, uh, to ten is Jeannie McDuffie. I might add, you were talking about nine lots. There's an L-shaped piece of land that we will be giving to the church there. Also, the church is going to be buying number one, so you'll really end up there with, uh, one lot that will include the present church lot, the, uh, extra land, and lot one.
Did, did you own those properties at one time?
Wait, sir, yeah. You said that you owned those properties at one time?
Yes.
Did you own them at the time they were subdivided?
No. Well, right, it has to be subdivided to sell, so at the time, it was, it was subdivided in my, in, uh, Debbie Bro's name and in the other name. The sale has been, been taking place.
Regarding the comment about the, uh, the, uh, lots not being included in the drainage impact study, we did include those lots was taken into consideration when we did the, uh, drainage impact study.
We have in our packet a, um, a document from the Corps of Engineers showing the subdivision submitted as a full subdivision with those lots included. At some point in time, that must have changed between the time that was submitted to the Corps and now?
Well, we showed the Corps all the lots, yes. We went, we got these, this resubdivision done because we could, I mean, we met the ordinance to do it, and, uh, but we showed them all for the permit for the Corps, because we were mitigating wetlands off of some of them.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Speaking of that same drawing, um, your detention on track A has changed footprints from the course of middle in January to what we got this afternoon, and that requires an updated jurisdictional diagram, update to the Corps.
That's in process.
We have resubmitted that to the Corps. We finished that, that area after we made the first submittal to the Corps.
CK and Associates is handling it, and immediately whenever they were lying that additional area will be needed, we submitted that to the Corps through CK, and they said it's submitted for, for us.
Paige, Jim?
I, I have a question. This cross-section of the road is not the one that was adopted by this commission, I believe, maybe two months ago?
Yeah.
This is the wrong, this is the wrong cross-section. Your water should be closest to your street, not your gas. And it's the same, you also have in the extra information that you send us, you have the same, um, cross-section. There's an updated pro, street.
We can see that that gets, gets put on there. Sorry about that.
I'd like, um, I'd like to suggest to you that maybe, uh, you know, you need to, I need to, I don't see in the plan how you're going to, how you're going to deliver sewer service to those lots. You're going to provide it from the rear, you're going to provide it from the front? I don't, I just don't see how you're going to do that, and, you know, your cross-section is wrong. I, I think you've got the same issue with access for emergency vehicles. I'd like to see you, um, you know, change that T-intersection to a cul-de-sac, and, and, you know, and we're also having an, an open condition, CSRS, for you to show the contours on the property. But I, I'd almost suggest to you that you need to get this, you know, some of these things addressed in the plat, clarified, and get them to see, you know, to the engineers so you can review it, and, um, and then we can look at it. You know, I, there's just, you know, too much that needs to be addressed before we can approve that, I think.
Well, we, you know, we will, uh, address the issue and, and put a cul-de-sac there.
I'm sorry?
We will do the cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And the way we're planning on servicing, uh, the, these lots with sewer is down the rear of the lots, you know, and we'll have that shown on our construction plans.
Well, if you're going to do it along the rear of the lots, I guess, you know, you've got, um, you've got seven and a half foot servitude on each side, which I assume is going to be the ditch.
It would prob, I would assume it would be a swell or something like that on the rear.
Right, so, so it'll be a drainage, but, you know, but I think that that sewer line also needs to be in a servitude, because somebody's going to have to go in there and fix it.
Yes, we, we will dedicate proper servitude for that, but, uh, you know, that's how we're going to serve it, and we would have to add the utility servitude to that sewer.
I just, again, I just think that those are things that I think you need to address and, and have on the plat, reviewed by, by the engineer, and make sure that he's technically satisfied with it. I think it's just, it's a number of open issues, that's all.
Any other comments or ques...
Say something?
We gotta go to Puff.
I mean, the open issue on the cul-de-sac was, the first I heard about it was tonight, so...
No, 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 that's, that's, I, you're right.
That's why we brought it up.
That's why we brought it.
We're trying to inform you guys.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a question, because I, I just don't know the answer to this. If you tie in a sewer system like that, does that mean those ten lots now become a part of that subdivision? No? Not necessarily? Okay.
Any comments or questions? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak?
My name's Farrell. I'm here to speak on behalf of New Day Ministry, uh, which is in that area where the subdivision is going to be built, and we're just here to say that we are in favor of the subdivision, and that we feel that it is a good thing for the community, and also it's a benefit for us as upgrading our area, and it's a much-needed, um, subdivision, uh, basically because of the fact that it's going to provide, which I feel, affordable housing for a lot of people, and it would be an improvement to the whole Peraville community, and so we are just elated that it's going to come, hopefully, and it's going to be passed, and that it can be a part of our community, and that's all I had to say.
Thank you. No one else? Lester, you want to come back up?
I've, I've got a question. Charles, um, do you, can you tell us when the pre-application meeting occurred? I mean, roughly, are we talking three months ago, four months ago? Well, let me ask you, let me ask a question.
Probably in March sometime.
Was that, was that prior to the, um, the simple divisions on the ten lots?
No, it was after.
It was after the simple divisions on the ten lots? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
One more quick question. Um, Charles, I think you and I talked about this the other day on another development. The, do you have a plat there in front of you? Um, Western Court Drive, where it goes and up to the north, and it just ends at the property line? That's too short for a, to require a turnaround or anything, right?
Because it does, the length does not exceed two-hundred-and-fifty feet, so it's not a requirement.
Has a road setup been considered that would utilize the back of the ten lots that we're speaking of, so we wouldn't have ten different owners that would have, uh, have to have access to Highway nine-thirty and nine-twenty-nine?
Those, uh, those ten lots, we have highway permits on each one of those right now to put, to build a driveway. The two houses are under construction next time, right now.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, then what is the wish of the commission?
Michael, do you comfortable with the list of things to correct on the plat and allowing it to move forward, or what's your preference?
I don't think there's much for them to correct, I, you know. I, I don't think the issue is the contours or seeing a sewer line. I think everybody knows what the issue is. You, you've got ten, ten driveways that are going to dump out on state highways at a state highway intersection instead of designing it from the beginning.
Yep, but they're not, they're not before us. It's somebody else's property.
To, to answer your question, I, I don't think that, I, I think there's enough, I don't see how we're going to have any different conclusion, uh, in thirty days than we have right now.
Okay.
The issue, Julio, is these ten lots, well, first off, everybody knows the commission stand on lots, uh, fronting on public streets and access to those public streets. We don't, we don't condone that. Uh, you have a simple division of property which came before me, started off the thirtieth of August two thousand and six, uh, where you, uh, if you look, you, uh, have lots one through six, tract X, tract Y. The following week, you have a copy of that plat. Tract Y came before me to be signed, where it was divided up into four more lots. And if I remember correctly, hearing, I believe, that what is listed as tract TP on your plat, uh, came into the planning department to be split up into two lots, and that was in January, and that was stopped. So legally, illegally, however you want to refer to it, we've got a circumventing of the subdivision ordinances. Another, you know, once again, we've got a loophole situation here. Uh, I'm not going to say that we can deny this subdivision, but we definitely need to go ahead and tighten up on our ordinances, so we don't continue to have this kind of a thing happening.
I don't disagree with you, but, you know, I'm also looking at two plats that were approved by, you know, by staff and the commission that are signed by two different owners. And, um, you know, and as much as I don't like it, those are the facts.
So if there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, once again, I will ask, what is the wish of the commission?
I, I just have one question on the lots adjoining the state highways. Are they putting a culvert for every driveway, so you're going to have driveway ditch, driveway ditch? Is there any...
Is there any consideration to connect and all that?
Please drive it.
Let me get, I think the best service here is... Yes, the residence would be twenty-two feet from the, from the edge and there's a turnaround.
I didn't prepare the things for the permit, but I would assume there would be a culvert for each driveway.
And I would encourage you to try and connect them if you could. I mean, it just makes a lot nicer transition through there.
Alan, most of them are already out there and installed.
I know, but, I mean, you can come back.
Oh, okay.
So you, you say just put clap all across the lot and all of them?
Is it a metal pipe?
No.
Is it all metal or concrete?
Metal pipe.
Yeah, a little bit harder, but you can do it.
He's talking about closing, and the roadside ditch along the front.
We could put that in our construction plan.
Alan, does that satisfy, as far as an answer to your question?
Yeah, I mean, can't make them do it, so I would prefer to have, prefer to not have ten.
It would make a whole lot nicer. We prefer to not have ten lots on the...
Absolutely.
So you're, you're prepared to accept, accept that as an obligation on your part?
Yes.
To do what?
To, to essentially culvert the area along Highway nine thirty and nine twenty-nine, the frontage of the overall tract, including the lots that are outside the subdivision.
I don't know how he can culvert a property.
I agree.
It can't culvert, it's under somebody else's name.
I understand that.
If it's culvert, it's somebody else's.
We would have to get it approved by DOTD, 'cause that'd just fill out those state highways, so.
Well, not only would you have to get it approved by DOTD, but counselor does bring up a question, you'd have to get the owners to buy off on it.
Put it this way, if the owners wanted us to do it, we would, we would be open to that.
All right.
That's good.
All right, well, let me, let me take a shot at this. I'll, I'll make a motion of approval for subdivision, subject to the plat being amended to reflect the cul-de-sac with a radius, with a minimum radius adequate for fire engines, to show inadequate, um, utility servitude along the rear of lots one through ten that are external to the lots to provide for sewer service to those external lots, correction of the typical roadway section to the one that's been approved by the planning commission, and subject to approval by the adjoining property owners and obtaining of the necessary permits from DOTD, culvering, a contiguous culvert from, along lots one through ten in the frontage of the property on Highway nine twenty-nine and nine thirty.
Core update.
Oh, and updating the core of engineer permit. You got that, Angie?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Alan Kraus. Is there any objection or discussion?
I oppose.
I object.
Me, I oppose.
Object.
I object.
Roll call. Angie, go ahead, ask, call a name.
Mr. Bryant?
Four.
Mr. Courtwright?
Oppose.
Mr. Kraus?
Four.
Mr. Will.
Oppose.
Mr. Dumas?
Four.
Miss Becknell?
Oppose.
Miss Sloman?
Four.
Mr. Barrow?
Oppose.
Did y'all just tie the vote up? It'd be a draw.
You wanted that.
Been waiting two years for this.
You signed the first two, so it's only right.
Only right that it comes to you.
You got it, see?
Good answer.
That's a, that's a Barrow conspiracy.
It's May, not April. We got through April.
Knowing what I know with this, and how it was done, and with the conditions, and everything that still needs to be, you know, I, I think I see enough where, uh, I'd like, I think I see, I see enough here where we need to get some more information on this, so I'm gonna have to vote nay.
I think we need to specify for the record the reason for denial.
My reason for den...
Nobody's denied, we just didn't approve.
We didn't, everybody voted, uh, it was a vote on Julio's motion.
Oh, okay, excuse me, all right.
Nobody's denied, we just didn't approve.
So Julio's motion fails, so now I'm still entertaining...
I would like to make a motion to defer for the submit, uh, the applicant to give us the contours that were not provided, the applicant to consider all the things that were mentioned, including a modification of roads to incorporate, uh, the other ten lots that may or may not be owned by them, uh, et cetera.
I have a motion to defer by Mr. Steve Barrow. I'd second that. Seconded by Mr. Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I oppose.
I oppose.
I have two nays, Mr. Mike Bardwell and Mr. Julio Dumas.
I'm opposed.
Three, Sherry Sloman. I don't need to, there's only three of you. I was suspecting that you were gonna make the vote again. Item six C one, Parker Place Estates.
Brandon Acosta, GWS Engineering, here to present tonight Parker Place subdivision. Proposed eighty-eight lot, single-family residential development on the south side of Parker Road, approximately twenty-two hundred feet west of LA forty-four. We'll have one boulevard entrance, as you can see, directly across from Fountain Blue Drive. Existing zoning of the property is RM. Typical lot size, seventy by one hundred and fifty feet, is a curb and gutter subdivision. Approximately thirty-four and a half acres, density of about two point six. This project will share, or we're proposing for this project to share a retention pond, approximately thirteen acres, with the previously approved Shadows of Ascension subdivision. We'll also share the sewer treatment facility for Shadows of Ascension. I just add that we originally submitted in January and have been deferring for the last four, five months, just to improve on the con, overall concept of the drainage that we are presenting to the ERA and the staff. Both the drainage and traffic studies were approved. And I'll take drainage questions, uh, we have a traffic engineer, Mr. Steve Guermeil, take any traffic questions, and my developer, Mr. Greg Flores, will take any questions on the homes, restrictions, et cetera.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, the first comment I have for you is your cross-section is, um, out of date on the bottom of your drawing, you need to swap water with gas. That was approved by this commission about two months ago, so. Second question is, was there, um, wetland determination done on this property that's been approved?
You wanna answer that?
Flood determination?
Wetlands.
Wetlands, yes, sir. The wetlands have been mitigated.
They have been mitigated. Off-site mitigation?
Yes, sir, Saint Francis.
Purchase credits?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Just the same comment about the cul-de-sacs. You know, you have two T-turnarounds, just, you guys would consider changing that?
Yes, ma'am. We had designed it just according to the rules, but it's, it's not such a large issue for us to do something.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Before we get too far discussing cul-de-sacs...
Yeah, I've, I've got the same question, I think.
Uh-huh.
I think I've got the same question.
Um, tying in the two developments together. Let me hear a thought process of why you wouldn't have done that.
Let me take it?
Um, I, I'll, I'll give a couple of answers, just from my point of view, and Mr. Flores can give his. Number one, to me, would be an added crossing for the Mardi Beuret ditch, which is a, would be a big double box culvert crossing, which I've been told by the adjacent property owners that we met with last Monday, on Abbey James Road is a big problem with the brief buildup and stuff like that, not to mention probably, it's about a two-hundred thousand dollar problem for Mr. Flores, um, and it's just a maintenance problem for the parish, it's an added maintenance problem. Secondly, I can see this, if you had this coming through, as a cut-through to avoid the light when that school is built for LA forty-four and Parker Road. People would be able to come up forty-four, go into the Shadows of Ascension subdivision, cut through, drive through this subdivision, come out right by the proposed school that's being built. That would be my two cons, I guess, for the extra crossing.
Mr. Bardwell, we are proposing to have a pedestrian bridge, so that members of both subdivisions can use the clubhouse and common areas, which is, is right across the, um, bayou there from Capel, that end of Capel Avenue. So, uh, for children, eventually we'll end up going to school there, and also, uh, we have a large green space there at the end of the lake. We have a clubhouse and a swimming pool as well.
I'm just looking at those distances, you know, it just didn't seem to be that far to where you couldn't have considered tying in at least one of those roads in that second development.
What is the distance from the T-turnaround in Parker Place to the Shadows of Ascension T-turnaround there? Is that approximately two hundred, less than two hundred feet, like it looks like?
Looks like about two fifty, maybe three hundred feet.
I called, uh, Michael Sanji on this matter today. Michael, you were gonna have some information for us tonight? Did you get anything?
I, I think the question was, you know, what, what type of structure would we be talking about, and I think Sean ran some, I think you said triple, triple eight-by-eight boxes, and this is very, uh, quick, but, you know, this whole concept was submitted, discussed with Bill Rue before we even allowed him to move forward, and the reason that we were in favor of it, it actually reduced the water surface profile on the upstream end at Parker Road by, I believe, seven, seven tenths. So when you start adding another structure in there, you're going to start eliminating the gain of a lower water surface at the upstream end. So it's very difficult to save the size without trying to say, you know, what, what performance you want, in other words, how much reduction would you want? If you're gonna maintain the, the reduction of water surface at point seven, which they're doing, you'd have to bridge with no losses. So, I mean, it's very difficult to save the size, but it, a triple box structure would certainly be that large, and your, the cost you mentioned a while ago is probably light, if I had to guess. Does that answer your question?
It's not what I wanted to hear.
I think in many terms, reducing the outflow on the drainage.
The Mardi Beuret ditch has just been added as a major drainage channel for the parish also, so I don't know if that had anything to do with what Bill was saying, 'cause we've had that approved by DOTD as a major drainage channel for the parish, so I think...
Well, we didn't discuss anything with Mr. Bill Rue regarding another crossing. That wasn't proposed or contemplated, we simply talked to him about the concept of what this is called as inline storage in a drainage channel and, and what it could do to the performance of the system. So, um, there's been a whole lot of concern downstream. This tends to retain and, and slow down the water, not only for these developments, but for the upstream drainage areas as well. So we, we didn't discuss with Mr. Rue about another crossing, but my intuition tells me he would not be too wild about it, uh, because of, just as, uh, was pointed out, uh, its additional head loss and its additional maintenance.
If I might speak for a moment about the quality of homes, 'cause I know that's seen, that has been a question that we've answered to a few of the surrounding owners. We've made a commitment for Shadows of Ascension, that the minimum of size of the living area would be nineteen hundred square feet. So typically, you'll see mostly four-bedroom, three-bath homes, um, more along the lines of the development that was done at Old Mill. I was one of the builders in there for a time, and, uh, we have, uh, four or five builders that wanna be a part of this neighborhood and stay on board with us as we go through the development phase on Shadows, and, um, that would be the same commitment for those quality homes in Parker Place as well.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Yeah, I've got one, I've got one question, and I, on the retention pond, how do you ma, service it or maintain it? Doesn't seem to be any areas can get around it, except for a slope.
I would assume that the retention pond is going to be the property of the Home Owners Association.
That's correct. The embankment of the retention pond. That is correct. Servitude is provided through the pond in case the parish would have to come in, muck it out if there was any problems or anything like that.
But our plan is to deepen it, create good habitat for fisheries, and also to overex for any siltation that might happen in the future during construction. for any siltation that might happen in the future during construction.
Don, is that a satisfactory answer to your question?
Well, usually if it's got water, you can't maintain it. You can't get into the bank. And where it rains around here, we have water all the time in that retention pond now lately. How do you keep the size from collapsing in and how do you maintain it? That's what I was trying to understand.
Association takes on the responsibility of maintaining the banks. So it's something that we will do, or eventually the homeowners will take care of.
When you say association, do you mean associations with both?
Associations, yes, sir.
Okay, so they take the responsibility, but how are they physically able to do that if you don't provide for means for them to get around it?
They're part of the, we do actually provide for servitudes for maintenance from the association. And we input restrictions that, in the case of a bank failure, that bulkheads will be required. We've, I've experienced that myself in the past. And eventually, those are things that the homeowner, individual homeowner, will do or be asked to do if there is a major failure on the bank.
If I may add, the embankment of the pond is a six-foot in elevation change at about a four-to-five-to-one slope. So you would have ample room to do what you needed to do, and most equipment can work on that side slope.
We have a comment here that says, per section 37.204 of the subdivision regulations, side slopes can't be steeper than 3H, 1B unless it's concrete lined. Are they gonna be concrete lined?
No, no. They would not be steeper than three-to-one.
That comment was not relative to the pond. It was relative to the ditch downstream of the pond.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I guess we haven't hit on traffic too much, but there's also a comment about working with DOT to modify the signal timing at Parker. Parker and 44, y'all willing to do that?
My name's Steve Gremio, and I'm a traffic consultant for the developer. My study found at the intersection of Parker and LA 44, there was a slight problem with the signal timing, and that needed to be adjusted. And it's DOTD's signal, so we would have to work with them in order to get that timing adjusted. That, the problem exists as it is right now. We're gonna be adding some traffic to it, but the problem is there right now.
I've got, I've got a question about that signal. You know, every development that's come in that area has mentioned the same thing about dealing with the timing on that signal. I'm wondering how, how all of this can occur, because everybody always mentions timing on that signal, every other development in that area, but yet I can't see how that's gonna alleviate the problems. We've got a loss of service here at that intersection, and everybody's solution is always to, to adjust the timing on that signal. I don't see how that can mitigate the impact all the way around that area.
Generally, there's a perception that there's a whole bunch of problems at an intersection. If somebody comes and they have to wait through more than one signal, one red light cycle, there's a major problem. I sat out there and counted the traffic and watched, watched the traffic for the morning and evening peak hours. There were some slight problems out there for maybe 15 minutes, but for most of the time, the signal operated okay. Now, okay, to me, does not mean okay to somebody that wants to just drive up and go through the intersection without stopping. They may have to stop for, for one red light cycle, but that would be the maximum. It was, it was my, in my notes, most of the traffic got through the signal without having to stop for more than one traffic cycle. I'll describe what I, the major thing that I saw out there was, there's all, all the intersection approaches are one lane. There's no turn lanes out there. There's a heavy northbound turn movement in the evening from LA 44 onto east, east of 44, it's non-33. There's, that movement is very, very heavy. And DOTD has the signal phase where there's a left turn movement that goes all by itself, which it needs to be out there in the evening because of the heavy left turn movement. However, that same phase is there during the morning when there's hardly any left turn movement at all. So that left turn comes, that left turn arrow comes on for southbound traffic. Northbound traffic is sitting there. East and westbound traffic is sitting there. Nobody's going through the intersection. There's no, there's no turns going from south to east in the morning, hardly any. And so for most, most of the cycles of the traffic signal, there's a lot of, everybody's stopped on the approaches, and nobody's using the intersection because the only thing that has the green phase is the, is the southbound left turn movement. So if that were eliminated just for the morning, as I indicated, in the evening, it's very much necessary. But if that would, if that would be eliminated in the morning, that signal timing could then be transferred to westbound traffic, which backs up in the morning. But that, that was a major problem that I saw out there.
Just looking at all the levels of service here, just going through real quick, we have dropping from A to B, dropping from A to B, dropping from C to D, dropping from B to C, dropping from C to D. So you're saying that throughout all those drops, you don't see anything that deems needing addressed from a traffic impact? That's kind of unprecedented. In these reports, you usually see something that, you know, if you're dropping that many services, that there's something that needs to be addressed. Can you speak to why there's not anything there?
Levels, level of service C is the acceptable level of service nationwide for traffic signals. If you go anyplace else, you go into New Orleans area to Baton Rouge area, everything's operating at a level of service E and F. Level of service C is, level of service D starts when you indicate that an intersection has a capacity problem. So generally, we don't make any recommendations for anything that doesn't go past level of service C.
Okay, so we have two of those. What are we doing on, on those two? The intersection of Highway 44 and Parker have, has two C to Ds here.
The, the D, I believe, was the westbound?
Parker Road westbound and Highway 44 northbound.
The, the, the recommendation I told you about the changing the morning phasing for the signal to eliminate that left turn movement, that would solve the problem for the westbound Parker. The other, the other one was a minor problem that, that I believe currently exists. But in tweaking the signal timing, you can get all the approaches to operate at a level of service C. And I believe that's indicated in my report.
What guarantee do we as a commission have that anything will be done with the signal and that the results will be less impact?
I believe your review agency indicated that the developer worked with DOTD to complete those signal timing and phasing changes.
No. Our ERA gave us a comment, confirm that the developer will work with DOTD. He didn't say, he never said that you would. He said he wa, our comment was confirm that you would, which leaves potential question in his mind. That's the way I take it. And that's what, that's what Steve started off asking.
Right.
That was his whole point for bringing this up. He wanted to confirm that the developer would work with DOTD. And that's when they brought you up.
What assurance do we have as a commission that's gonna be followed through and actually done to where we, we can see less of an impact? Because that's what your traffic study says will mitigate the impact. How do we, as a commission, get assurance that that's done? Actually, number one, that you approach DOTD and that they actually do make a signal timing change, and then we get a result back that, or somebody in the parish, ERA, planning gets a result back that indicates that the impact was mitigated?
Mr. Bardwell, that, if that's a condition, we would be allowed to pursue post-approval. We have an extended period of time before this parcel would ever be started. Probably give us plenty of time to deal with that issue. And if that's a condition of permitting, perhaps we can address it in the meantime.
I have a question. Is the school built right there on Parker?
Under construction.
Under construction.
Yes, sir. I think it's slated for it to open fall of 2000.
When it opens up, all the things change. So I think not only should you commit, but the school board and DOTD's probably gonna have to go out there and visit that a number of times, because it's gonna be a problem.
I mean, that's the, that's the point I'm trying to make in these traffic studies, is that it's, it's quick to say we can make a signal adjustment. And I know it's not any one developer's issue. I mean, we've got several big developments going on in that area, and we've got a school coming in that area. So, I mean, to just hear signal timing changes constantly, I don't think that that's gonna solve the issue.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? No, I was getting ready to. I wanna make sure right now, if, if there are no other comments or questions from commissioners, then I, see, our, our acting director of planning, he wants to get in on it, too. Mr. Sigler?
I would like to bring back the crossing of the drainage canal of the creek. At the T-heads, one is in your subdivision, the other one is in Shadows of Ascension. And first, let me congratulate the two sides for sharing the inline detention, because that's, I think it's the first time we've done that here, and I'm glad to see that developers are sharing a, a deal like that. But if there's any possible way to tie those streets together from a traffic standpoint, I mean, we're looking at two subdivisions that are gonna be full of kids. And, and we hear the, the comment about fire trucks being able to turn. One thing I'm, I'm really becoming more and more concerned with, after watching it in a couple of places this morning, is getting school buses that can move in and out, garbage trucks that can move in and out. And from a planning standpoint, you pretty much have a responsibility to make roads that line up with each other connect. This is a really good reason not to. So if there is, you know, if it's impossible to connect those roads, that's one thing. But if it's in a, a matter of installing four box culvert, three box culverts, four box culverts to make those two roads connect, that's something I'd like to see the developers work out between the two of you.
It's actually the same developer for both subdivisions?
It's the same, it's two different deals. And they need to split them up. What do they need to do?
I guess the major problem I see with it is just that it would affect the overall drainage plan that we have presented to the ERA. And it is a maintenance problem.
I would like to see some, some engineering calculations done that, that tell us how much three boxes or four boxes are gonna change. Michael Sanji said that one of the reasons for this was we got seven-tenths improvement, which, which is great. Three boxes, it's gonna take at least three boxes, and it may take four. But if it takes four boxes, what has that done to us? If we've still got seven-tenths, then I would like to see the four boxes put in, and let's connect the roads.
I, uh...
And that's the commission's, that's the commission's wish, but...
Well, I think all things considered, we have, Sherry and Paige both brought up some discussions that we've had with the firemen. We have had discussions with the school board planning department. So we do know that there are some issues. At the same time, I don't believe that we have actually heard from our ERA that this is something that is totally impossible. Until we hear from him that this is, this is engineeringly unfeasible, I, I can understand, I can appreciate what you see and what you believe, but you don't work for me. CSRS works for me. So I'm gonna take their word first. I don't see that as an unreasonable request. Especially when, I'm kinda like Scott. I see all these drops in levels of service, and this is Ascension Parish, not East Baton Rouge Parish. East Baton Rouge Parish operates in the EN and F, and I feel sorry for them for that. But I see us even going from a B to a C. That's still a drop in a level of service. This may be something that will also help some of that out, too. And, I mean, because all that was really asked of you as far as, with all these drops and levels of service, was to confirm whether, you know, you would go ahead and get with DOTD and work on signal timing. That's not an unreasonable request either. So I, I'd kinda like to see, I'd like to see something in respect to tying these two roads in, to tie these two developments in as well. And at the same time, I wanna get some, you know, I'd wanna get comment from our ERA on that, too. So I don't see that as an unreasonable request. Is that all you had, Ron?
Yes, that's it. Maybe if Mike gives me an idea of what, you know, if they wanna continue in the preliminary part, that's fine, but that, that's where I'd like to be.
Okay. Then at this time, I wanna go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak on this property? Okay. Comments, questions from commissioners?
Well, Mr. Chair, I have to agree. I think that, you know, someone just needs to spend some time to design a reasonable way to cross that drainage structure and, and connect the two roads. I also have an issue with the stacking distance on the front there where it's, where it's a divided entrance. To me, it seems like an awfully short distance going on into Parker, and maybe he can reconfigure that part of the subdivision. You've got the wrong cross-section, and I would move to defer to give the applicant an opportunity to come back with, with a revised plan.
I have a motion to defer by O'Neill Dumas, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Now we have item 6C2, Shadows of Ascension.
Chairman, that was my recommendation, and if y'all approve this, that they schedule them all on the same thing without risking fruit, there's nothing excessive to bring that out right now.
Let me, okay. So let me ask you this, O'Neill, because we basically were gonna have a public hearing on Shadows of Ascension also.
You can open the public hearing, see if anyone wants to speak in it, but I think it would be much easier addressed all at one time, because it was my recommendation. it would be much easier addressed all at one time because it was my recommendation. If you were going to approve Parker Estates, this needed to be approved, and it was a...
Well, I, okay, I kind of, I was kind of getting that feeling as far as, because we've got this revised preliminary. But I want to make sure that we do hold, if we need to, we should go ahead and hold a public hearing, because we may have individuals here that will speak on Shadows, but not necessarily Parker. So...
And we would actually request that it be deferred, because it is just, the preliminary was revised just to show the change in the pond. I just, and I think my boss met with you on that, so...
Right.
Really no comments or anything we have to add to that?
Well then, I, I would like to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak. So I'll entertain a motion on Shadows of Ascension.
Motion to defer.
A motion to defer by Julio Dumas, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7, public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivision, 7A, Gateway Cove.
Good evening. My name is Derek Murphy with Ferris Engineering, and I'm representing, representing America Homeland tonight for the final plat for Gateway Cove. We ask approval for this subdivision as all, all ERA comments and staff comments have been addressed. We ask approval with the contingency of replacement of asphalt and the final inspection and meeting any punch list items that come up. As you know, any item that's not pulled off the agenda by one week before this meeting, we have to leave it on, and the rain caught us by surprise this week. So within less than 10 days, this subdivision will be 100% completed. So we ask for your approval with those contingencies.
Less than 10 days?
Yes, sir.
What if the rain catches you again?
Can't control that.
The tape's running. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Derek, I have a question for you. You only have one entrance, and that's a lot of lots, 109. And just a suggestion thought here, why couldn't you do adjacent to Lot 25, an emergency exit, gate that and open that for emergencies and give you a second way out? That's Olive Street right there, so there's, it's not a...
Well, this was to be completely, you know, fenced in by the property owners and so forth and, and be exclusive. This is how it was approved with this many lots, and that's how the developer has come up with its finances and so forth to this point. So at this point, to actually eliminate a lot would be cost prohibitive to the developer.
Say that last statement.
I said it would be cost prohibitive to the developer.
Even for the safety of the residents that are going to live in the subdivision?
I would just say these same concerns were raised in the preliminary hearing.
Well, we had talked about connection, but the privates, the privacy negated, negated that connection, yes.
And we understand that, and we totally understand if it, if you want to put a gate there so nobody comes in and out, but it would be there for emergency purposes.
Well, the subdivision is pretty much finished construction at this point.
But that rain caught you, you didn't quite finish, did you? And I'll just say this, in my neighborhood, in the last two months, there's one entrance in and one entrance out. It was already developed when, when we moved in. In the last two months, we have been caught one by a rec, actually two recs. We could not get in and out of our subdivision for two hours. Now, that was just a rec situation. In one situation, it was early morning and all this, there were no buses coming down our neighborhood street, so all those kids were late for school. Now, what if it was something much more dire than a, an accident that only took two hours to clear up?
Well, I do have the developer here at this time. He would have to be the one to make this ultimate call.
And we have much less than 109 lots.
Well, once again, as we've run up on this before as part of the public meetings that we had on this development, the little subdivision from Lee Drive, of course, requested once again that we not put connections there, and that was part of our request in the beginning also to appease the people in the, in the neighborhood. It is set up and has been approved as a gated community, and the people that are proposing to buy in this subdivision with us would prefer to keep it that way. We would prefer not to make that tie in.
But if you put a gate there, it's still a gated community. How does that go away? And if you tell the people now, guess what? If you have an emergency, you can get out of your subdivision. How is that not an amenity?
So what do you tell, you want me to go in there and construct a street and tie that in and put a gate in it? Is that, is that what you say?
Well, I'd certainly like to see it. I don't know where, what discussions, Mr. Bardwell mentioned, you guys had discussions and this topic was brought up at your preliminary meeting. I guess I would like to know why it wasn't pursued. Why is that an impossibility, I guess, is my point.
Because everything is based upon our preliminary approval, and that's, that's the way we built it.
If, if I may, it was brought up during the preliminary approval, and if I remember correctly, Carrie, you, y'all did agree to make this one of the last building sites as far as, with, and I think there was, it was in respect to, should the potential arise for, if I, if I remember correctly. Charles, do you remember?
It seems like that was the case.
So I'm not going to say it was ever totally a dead issue. I think there was some, some discussion as far as we would, by going ahead and holding it up as, as one of the last building sites, kind of see how everything would go.
Well, the whole deal was that, you know, it was asked, and it was asked multiple times to tie it in, and, and everybody's held firm because it was a private road, and it was a gated community. I, I mean, I would like to see it. I mean, I would like to see that connection be made for it, you know. It would be nice if the developer would offer to do it.
Well, at this point, I'm not prepared to offer to do it, but I am prepared to offer to go back and have conversations on it and sit down and look at it and see if it can be a possibility that will not hurt the integrity of what we're trying to do with the private developer. And we will reserve that lot until we make the decision and see if this is something that is a workable situation.
My feelings are, is, is I'm not going to be the one personally holds you accountable for doing it on the final plat. I, I'm basically saying that it would have been nice, you know, I asked for it at the, on the preliminary. I thought, I was thinking in terms of safety and, and if something happened up at the, on 44 at the entrance to the subdivision. That's basically all I wanted to say.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak? Okay. Comments or questions from commissioners?
You know, I, I share the same concern for the safety. I understand, you know, the hesitation here, but the layout was approved. We have some conditions that need to be addressed, there's punch list items and the asphalt to be placed, and I'll move for approval subject to all of the appropriate final inspections and certifications by, by the engineer.
I'll second that. Like I said, I'd like, I'd just ask, you know, if it can be looked at and if it can be worked in, fine, it's not a contingency.
Thank you, Chair.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8, public hearing to consider the following simple divisions of property with a variance, 8A, Kenny Leon Property Lots 1 through 7.
My name is Scott Lobel. I'm with Lobel Engineering in Land Sarvan, and I represent Mr. Kenny Leon, the property owner. And tonight, we are requesting that you guys approve the simple subdivision into seven lots with a waiver requesting for Lot 6, the waiver that they don't have the frontage required on the public street.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
Charles, how many, how many lots do, do we need to have to have a subdivision? Just for clarification.
A major subdivision is more than 20. Minor is less than 20. Of course, all of these lots front on existing public streets with the exception of that one lot. There are no improvements.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
How do you access Lot 6? Lot 6 is, will be accessed by 30-foot private servitude of passage. It was straddled a property line between Lots 4 and 5, 15-foot each side of that property line, provided it's approved.
Here it ends at Lot 6?
Yes.
What is on the south side of Lot 5 and 6? Is that a neigh, it's not on here, I'm asking you, is it a neighborhood or is it more vacant land?
It's a rural, rural property owner, you know, so...
For their houses?
It's a mobile home, I think, on that property.
Is, okay.
Minimum lot size?
It's two lots per acre, 20,000 square feet.
I thought we had minimum restrictions of half acre. What am I thinking about?
It's one acre conservation, and it's 20,000 square feet.
Do some math here. 20,000. Boy, we're right on the borderline. 100, 200, okay, you're right there.
And we, we could have made those lots larger. Lots 1 and Lot 2 are larger lots. They do have the overhead transmission power line over there that's gobbling up. The servitude on that will be, you know, they can't place any structure within that servitude, so those, that's the reason for those lots being larger. And the other ones being right at the minimum requirements.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Where .459 acres is 19,940 square feet. 140.4 feet. So you're a little shy.
The reason that I brought it up is usually you see, you know, a minimum of that .5.
So I think you need to go back and, and redistribute the property. Lots 3, 4, 5, and 6, we're a little on the shy side.
100 by 201 is...
Yeah. .5 is 20.
Is, means 20,000. It says...
Well, then the acreage is wrong.
Yes, I'm wrong.
Make a motion to defer, give the owner some time to adjust the map?
Second.
I have a motion to defer by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Steve Barrow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 9, public hearing to consider the following servitude revocation, 9A, Stephen Estates, lots 18, 19, 20, and 28. Is there anyone here representing Stephen Estates, lots 18, 19, 20, and 28? Do we need a public hearing?
No, I'll go ahead and move that we defer. Give them a chance to come back next month.
Well, let's see, is there anyone here at all in the audience that is here to speak on these properties, on these servitude revocations? And we'll give them the opportunity to come back next month. With fees, we're going to go ahead and charge them the fees?
Yeah.
Yeah. Pretty material was made. Well, I just, just want to make sure staff understands. Mr. Bardwell, can you put that in his motion?
Yeah, that's included in the motion.
I'll second that motion. Okay, I have a motion to...
You get it, Angie? With fees, come back, they, deferring it.
Bardwell, seconded by Courtwright.
Yes. Motion to defer till next month with fees paid by Mike Bardwell, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Motion to defer till next month with fees paid by Mike Bardwell, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion?
Hold on. Not paid by Mike Bardwell.
Back up, Hoss. And paid and the motion was by Mike. Yeah. The motion was made by Mike Bardwell. The fees are not to be paid by Mike Bardwell.
Misplaced modifier.
Yeah. Motion passes. I'm still trying to get over the tie. Okay, item nine, committee report. The subdivision ordinance committee met and last month, of course, and you all, in fact, we'll be holding some public hearings tonight on some of the recommendations. We are scheduled to meet a week from this Friday at 12 o'clock at the planning department. That's pretty much my report. Strategic planning committee report.
I was there.
You were there?
I was there. The drainage ordinance was recommended to, is finally completed, a final draft of drainage ordinance was recommended to go to the full council for approval at the next meeting, or for introduction at the next meeting. Next up is the subdivision ordinance.
Yeah. Item 10, public hearing to consider amending the Ascension Parish Planning Commission bylaws. This was one of the recommendations that came from the subdivision ordinance committee. It would... It would limit the initial presentation time of the applicant or developer to five minutes rather than 10 minutes. The time limit not to exceed, not to exceed five minutes for rebuttal. And the commission could extend the time limits for further clarification or ask specific questions for clarification on specific points. A developer may request additional time to make his presentation by written request submitted. That's, I'm sure that would be one of the things that would be the option of the... That we, you know, for some discussion tonight, option of the commission. PowerPoint presentations would be limited to three minutes unless written request for additional time is submitted. Or then decide on a number of days prior to the meeting. And then any presentation requiring assistance of the Ascension Parish Technology Department is a responsibility of the presenter. That's in Article Four, Section Five, Article Five, Section One. Each speaker is limited to three minutes speaking time. Any presentation requiring assistance of the Ascension Parish Technology Department is the responsibility of the presenter. So, um... The, um... Be looking to fill in some blanks.
Couple question marks.
There are two question marks.
Yeah. And that would be days prior to the meeting.
Well, assuming they submitted some of the days prior to the meeting, who's going to approve it or deny it?
It would be a written request. If it is, um... If it is, if it is submitted and within a reasonable amount of time, then we could be, the commission can go ahead and adopt to, to be polled via email. Or the commission can vote to allow staff to accept it. Or the commission can vote to allow the chairman to go ahead and make that call, the co-chair, or how, let's see, it's, it's a call to be made by the commission. Commission can determine how they want to handle that.
What's wrong with requiring that they make the request prior to their making the presentation and giving the commission to suspend the rules at that time?
The problem is, we had an occurrence where someone presented, made a PowerPoint presentation and didn't tell anybody about it. They just submitted to the technology people and came up with a PowerPoint presentation. So we had no way of knowing. Now...
I'm sorry, I was separating the two issues. I'm talking about strictly the amount of time, not the PowerPoint presentation. I think PowerPoint presentation needs to be submitted, you know, by the same time that a pre-apply is submitted. You know, they shouldn't be, I mean, that's my personal opinion.
Well, here's the thing. We've got, we have applicants coming in. We have a developer or the engineer comes in and gives the initial presentation. Now, I normally, after they give their initial presentation, ask comments or questions by commissioners. So the applicant is actually going to get more than five minutes speaking time. Then we have the general, or the public hearing, where the general public is allowed to address their issues with the item at hand. Which you know as well as I do, at three minutes per individual, if you have 10 people, you've got half an hour, 20 people, an hour. I'm not saying everybody's going to take a full three minutes. Unless commissioners have specific questions of clarification, you're not going to hear from the residents again. The developer or the engineer, his designated, gets back up for rebuttal. Once again, when commissioners are given the opportunity to ask as far as questions or comments, and most of the time, those questions are put toward the developer or the engineer. So you're gonna end up getting more time anyway. I think going ahead and just limiting or setting a limitation on the time is reasonable.
Let me address that issue. I'll put this in here because I think it's a due process issue. The only way somebody can get a development approved is to come before this commission. They have, I think they have the, they should have an opportunity to request the commission for additional time if that's what they think they need, because this is what they're doing. That's what the responsibility of the commission is, and this is their only shot at doing it. So that's the reason why I put that, that if they want to request additional time, do it in advance, so you'll know about it. Because they may, if they need to, if they need to take 25 or 30 minutes, I think, to really make a presentation, that's, this is their only shot at getting their project approved. So that's why I put it in that way. They may not need that. They may speak with the chairman, and they may agree that we'll only do it 10 minutes or something like that, whoever they have to speak with, but you do have to give somebody due process when you're judging their projects.
Don't our meetings go long enough?
Well, I don't, I agree that, but I'm talking about, for the individual, that he may get 10 minutes and it may not be enough for him to present his project, and he may have spent, invested significant money's in.
So why can't we say for the first question mark, the developer may request additional time to make his presentation by written request submitted one week prior to the meeting?
Well, I was, I'm going to ask, I mean, that's...
Then maybe we should clarify who he submits it to. Maybe, O'Neil, we need to put another sentence in there that he submits written requests to staff one week before the meeting.
Well, that's where all the requests are made.
Well, I know, but, you know, some people don't look at all their requests and that, if we spell it out this way, they're looking at specific. So I would suggest one week.
And submitted to staff.
And submitted to staff. And the second question mark, PowerPoint presentations shall be limited to three minutes unless written request for initial time is submitted. Same thing, one week for presentation time.
I'm gonna make it seven days. I can redraft the whole thing.
When do you, when do the PowerPoint presentations require? I mean, I think staff should have an adequate time to review it before we get it.
Well, the technology department sometimes will have to modify. I don't know if they do it or not, or just hand over the templates to the developers for the presentations, but they have to be modified because they go on TV.
If you're given three days for a, for a five-day PowerPoint presentation, or even if it's 20-minute, I mean, you got three days before the end of the week and three days at the first of the week before we meet on Wednesday, I think that's, that's pretty, that's a lot of time.
Take a minimum, yeah, seven days.
That's a lot of time.
I have a question about that. Is that if they require or request additional time, will that be put on our agenda when we get it in our packet? And if so, is that enough time for Charles and his staff to get it on the agenda and send it out to us? Is seven days enough time? No.
Charles? What has to be submitted in our packet?
If they request more time, does it have to go on our agenda?
Yeah.
Which gets sent out?
These would be for things that's already on the agenda.
Yeah, it's already coming to us. It doesn't matter the duration, right?
We had talked about anyone who submitted a PowerPoint having to submit a paper copy with the packet.
We discussed that at a subcommittee meeting.
Yes.
But that's not in here, right?
It's not in this, right here.
So then, well, the thing is, though, I hate to say, the staff would go ahead and make the, print it out and include it in our information packets.
Why put the burden on staff? Why not put the burden on the, on the person who wants to bring the PowerPoint that they have to bring a digital copy as well as however many paper copies for distribution?
I agree with that move.
That's fine, too.
You're gonna have to go up on the seven days.
Well, that, that's also a point. You would have to go, you would have to give them 10?
When does staff put the packet in the mail? When do you put the packet in the mail?
One week before the meeting?
So it'd have to be a minimum of 10 working days prior to the meeting?
At least, yeah.
But that would be 10 working days.
Because it's usually taken a day or a day and a half to copy everything. So at least 10 work days.
I'm more comfortable with 10 working days than seven days. That's how I feel about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What about submitting it when they submit the whole package on the deadline date?
Well, see, that's my issue. I mean, if it's a developer that's gonna come make a, that's part of his presentation and is part of it, why can't it be part of his seminal package? Now, i-if it's an opponent that's gonna do it, then I think 10 working days part of the hearing, it's reasonable. But, um, but if it's, if it's the proponent of the project, whether it's a developer or an agent, I, you know, it ought to be part of his seminal package. Whatever he wants us to look needs to come in with the packet. Where an opponent could, could conceivably, you know, the 10-day would be reasonable because then it's, it's in there.
It looks like to me this whole article is addressing the developer, though, and not any opposing presenters. Is that...
Article five looks like, Article five looks like it goes to the, maybe the opposing speaker. But the first one looks like it's developer. The proponent.
Article four and Article five and six.
Yeah, four and six, yeah. Guess if you drag it out too long and have too much lead time, there will be a lot of changes. You know, if, if a rain event occurred on Monday, then you know the speaker in the next article is gonna try to capture and jam that into his, you know, Wednesday presentation, whether he submitted it or not. So what good is it to even submit it before time? You know what I'm saying? Developer, same situation. He might be at the last minute before he gets the last slide or something done.
You know, part of the matter is that the proponent of a project should know what his issues are, should be prepared to do that when he makes his seminal. So I would, on Article four, I would say that it has to be submitted with a packet, and the request for additional time needs to be made at that time. And the written request for additional time for presentation should be made at that time. I think that gives staff and everybody ample notice, and they could, they could so note it on the agenda. And I think on Article six, which would be the, the opponent, any presentation requiring assistance, you know, is his responsibility and shall be, shall be submitted at least 10 working days prior to the hearing.
To staff? To staff.
To staff.
I'll go with that. I agree with that.
O'Neil, is that reasonable?
That's fine with me. I don't, I just said you gotta give them some, if they want extra time, that's all. I think it's due process. That's what the timing is, is fine with me. Whatever y'all say it is, is what it is. I just think you need to afford somebody the time to do a presentation.
It's middle of the packet, four, and then 10 days, six.
Do we need that in the form of a motion?
I would say that we would need it in the form of a motion, but... Yeah, but as far as amending the bylaws, but I want to check, check with staff. Yeah, I would, I just want to check with staff to make sure that what we have, does that work for y'all?
Yeah, I think so. We're just thinking, we're gonna have to, in the notices to the adjacent property owners, we're gonna have to make mention of this 10 days before, and, you know, this time element.
We're sure that would be just a matter of revising the, the form letter that's sent out. Add that in, okay? All right, well, if there are other comments or questions at this time from commissioners, then I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak. And no one wishes to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners?
I think your wording is spelled right. One misphrased.
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we amend the bylaws to the commission for Article Four, Section Five. On the fourth line, starting on the third line, the commission may extend these time limits for further clarification or ask specific questions for clarification on specific points. A developer may request additional time to make his presentation by written request submitted at a time concurrent with his application for the, for the proposed development. A PowerPoint presentation shall be submitted concurrent with the application. And shall be limited to three minutes unless written request for additional time is submitted at the same time. And to include the remaining language. In Article Six of Section One, each speaker is limited to three minutes. Any PowerPoint, any presentation requiring assistance of the Ascension Parish Technology Department is a responsibility of the presenter and shall be submitted a minimum of 10 days prior to the hearing.
Working days.
10 working days prior to the hearing. To staff.
Fix the bolded, first bolded spelling of presentation as well.
I didn't write it.
You're making a motion.
Oh, and corrected misspelling.
I have a motion to amend Article Four, Section Five, and Article Six, Section One of the commission bylaws. I second it. By Julio Dumas, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion?
I'd just like to ask, what is the next procedure? This is done? This is all we have to do, is approve?
This is it.
We need to make sure it gets updated on the website. If you're not a opponent or proponent, then if you're two houses down, you may not know about it. So the information needs to be made available to the public who might go look for it.
Okay, we can, I'll talk with staff about, we'll go ahead and get that straightened out.
They're updating the website right now.
Uh, okay, any opposition or discussion?
I think you need to make it, we think that it's effective, because there's some stuff that's already floating around that's probably been submitted. Make it effective at the next meeting with the following.
Uh, be effective in 30 days? Maybe 30 days or 60, you want to go...
60 days, because you've probably got some stuff that's been submitted already. Say 60 days, because you've probably got some stuff that's been submitted already.
I'll make it effective.
60 days. Let me go with that. It should be covered.
Well, if I make it effective for the August 2007 hearing, that's two, two meetings from now.
Okay.
It's plenty, huh?
That's 90?
No.
It's 90.
The next meeting is June, that stuff is already in the works. The power of one is July.
July, August.
So August would be the one that would be most applicable.
Right, but it's 90 days.
At 60 days, it's a middle, though.
Right. Well, that's true, too. To be effective, August 2007.
I amend my motion accordingly.
I second that amended motion accordingly. Any, is there any opposition or discussion?
Motion passes. Item 11, "Public hearing to consider revision to the Ascension Parish Planning Commission policy to eliminate the use of general and all-purpose servitude."
Now's the goodest time, indeed, to bring up the fact that we may need to look at this a little closer.
I think, I was just getting ready to add the same thing, that you've already got an ordinance that says you just put servitude on there, so this needs to be looked at a little more detail. And there's also some issues that have come up with the Drainage Board in allowing, doing consolidated servitudes, et cetera. So I think those issues need to be addressed before, and address the changes.
I, I think it's in our best interest to name servitudes and not have general purpose or just servitude written on the plaque. But we're gonna have to look at the ordinances now because of, in light of what's happened tonight.
That's fine, we can look at the ordinances. Right now, what we're talking about is commission policy. Now, I, I don't-
You can't make a policy that changes the ordinance, and that's what you're talking about doing here. You've got an ordinance that just says put servitude on there. You can't do away with a policy that says you can't have servitude, because that's exactly what the ordinance is.
Did it talk about all servitudes, or did it talk about just the 15-foot servitude across the back of the lot?
It's, um-
Now, that's, that was the issue that came up earlier. It was specifically addressed to the 15-foot servitude across the back of the lot. I don't know that it addressed all servitudes.
Going to address all?
I wasn't the feeling I was getting. And actually, I'm gonna tell you, that's the first time I've ever heard that comment made. So I don't know who was directing that engineer as such, I, but that's the first time I've ever heard that, that comment made. Now, if it's an issue where we need to go ahead and address the, the ordinance, then that's what we'll go ahead and do. My understanding was that we, because we have done this before, we have, we've told engineers, you need to go ahead and specify the type of servitude. And there, I hadn't really seen where there was an issue with it. They've gone ahead and complied with that. For the most part. Then we had some that accidentally didn't. No, so I mean, if you want, we'll go ahead. We can change that to amend any pertinent ordinances, and then come back with a recommendation to the full commission.
Well, the new drainage ordinance specifies 15-foot drainage easement and names it that, and lays out where they're gonna be on the lots as part of it. So since that will be attached to everything else, I don't know that the commission necessarily has to have its own specific policy, because it's gonna, it's gonna dictate where they're gonna be at.
Well, that is something that I guess we're gonna, are we going to end up, uh, well, what? Okay, the drainage ordinance, are we going, and the subdivision ordinances, are we going to reference the drainage ordinance?
The drainage ordinance is a part of the subdivision ordinance.
All right, so it's gonna be an actual part of the subdivision ordinances?
It's actually, when it gets through to its numbering system, it's actually contained in the subdivision ordinance.
It's part of Unified Development Code.
Right.
That's gonna be part of the Unified Development Code. That's why it might be a little premature to start making changes at this point in time. And additionally, I know we, it is a problem on something, if you, if you adopt this policy, as you're saying, I think there needs to be at least an exception in it, that it does not apply to intergovernmental agreements and/or to cooperative endeavor agreements, because I don't think you can limit with how people use their servitudes. And it's a problem that we, that we're gonna run into, because we're, we're having people pipe, we're, we're working with people on piping drainage servitudes and allowing them to use some of that for road surface and expand roads.
That may be, uh, maybe a bit premature to discuss that right now.
Yeah, that's why. Because I ran into it this week, in fact. That's why.
Have to hold a public hearing?
I'm gonna still go ahead and hold a public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to, to address the commission. No one wishing to speak.
I move that we send this back to Subdivision Ordinance Committee and have them investigate further some of the issues that were discussed tonight, in terms of looking in the ordinances to make sure we're not in conflict with the ordinances and looking at the drainage ordinance as well.
I have a motion by Mike Bardwell to send this issue back to the Subdivision Ordinance Seconded by Sherri Slime. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 12, new business. Any items of new business?
Yeah, I'd like to bring up one item, new business, dealing with the workshops. I'd like to see if the Subdivision Ordinance Committee would like to address scheduling of workshops and workshops in general pertaining to PUDs, SPUDs, and TNDs.
I don't see where that's gonna be a problem. I think that, I think we can handle that and bring back some reasonable recommendations to the commission.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I have a motion by Mike Bardwell to send the issue of land unit development, small plan unit development, traditional neighborhood development workshops to the Subdivision Ordinance Committee, seconded by Steve Barrow. Any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Any other items of new business?
Yeah, I got one topic. One ordinance that I, I think we, we need to look at is landscape ordinance for the parish. We've talked about it in closed circles, but it hasn't picked up any steam. And with as much development as we have going on in this parish, we need to have some direction and some guidance for developers, commercial and residential, as it pertains to landscaping and landscape buffers, and give them some advice and some direction. So I'd like to see us start looking at the landscape ordinance. And I know Mr. Sanji and I had a discussion today. His group was kind of looking into that, and we had a discussion about a year ago, and it's kind of fallen off the radar a bit. But I, I think it behooves us to pick that back up and, and look at it. So I'd like to see the commission pick that up.
The commission or the?
Well, go, to go the appropriate place, I guess it would start off in a subdivision situation or ordinance committee.
Okay, so, um-
A draft animal.
Yeah, draft.
A draft animal like that exists.
Landscape.
There is a draft landscape ordinance.
Yeah, I, I've seen a couple of drafts. The one, the last one I saw is extremely weak, Ron, but there is a draft out there. But it just died at a draft about a year ago. But we have no direction right now, and, and the things that we're accepting in this parish are unacceptable.
We can, we can bring this up in subcommittee. See what's available or what's, what's going on right now, find out what's happening.
There are several, there are several items of that nature that I was asked to work through, that they, that fell by the wayside about a year or so ago. The first was a drainage ordinance, and that's, now that's up to the council's final decision, but it's been through its Strategic Planning Commission. Next is the subdivision checklist, which I was directed to work on, which that should be, it'll probably go through at least one Strategic Planning Commission meeting, maybe two. Then I don't know if it'll be landscape, or there's, I think there's another one.
Well, if, uh-
Construction specification.
Okay, I'm, I'm a little confused here, okay? Because if these are, and you really got me confused with subdivision checklist, because the commission already approved, there's always some subdivision checklist that we approved, so I don't know what's, what's going on with that. But if these are things that the Strategic Planning Committee was supposed to be working on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna repeat what was told to me so many times. Why are we doubling up our work? That's their baby. They need to be working on that. They wanted this stuff. It's theirs. Uh, in fact, I don't even think that, Ron, you shouldn't even have anything to do with it. That's, that's theirs. They wanted that stuff.
Well, that's true, but as Director of Planning, I've, I've got some responsibility, of course, to interpret it, and, you know, we've, and it's not, and it, I don't want to make it sound like it's just me, because it's not. And the last one, it was myself and Bill Rue and SCRS and, and Bob Turner, the Director of Public Works, and we worked a few problems out and got something that I think will probably pass. And that may be the same on, on some of these others. The landscape ordinance, when that comes time for that, I would be happy to provide you with a copy of what, what I've been given. Now, I can't tell you what the history of it is, because I wasn't here. So all I know is it's here, and some work has been done on it, and those things are all in the pipeline now. And they're moving. If you're saying you want to take a look at it first, that's fine.
Well, I, I think it is appropriate that anything that the Strategic Planning Committee is working on, that would normally fall under the jurisdiction of the Planning and Zoning Commission, because these are things that traditionally this commission did work on and make recommendations to the council, should come before this commission. So, but I, I-
I would agree, I would certainly agree in terms of landscape ordinance and things like that. The drainage deal is a much more technical deal, and that was primarily those who have to implement a drainage program and, and those that have to design them. That's what we felt like.
Okay. Yeah. Yes, we, we already, well, we reviewed a draft of the drainage ordinance and approved So that, that came through over a year ago. All right, let's, we'll, we'll discuss the, as far as the landscape ordinance, we'll, we'll discuss that in subcommittee and try and bring a report back to the full commission next month. As far as something that. Any other items of new business? Okay, then we'll move along to item 13, old business, 13A. It was a request from G and G Land Ventures to reconsider the simple division of property with a variance. But we also got a, handed a letter requesting a, the applicant was Sebastian, requesting to have it pulled from the agenda for any reason.
Request ran.
Or just-
Just couldn't be here, I think.
Can she have any viewings?
Well, we had the applicant here.
Was speaking with the councilman that is in this district. He asked me to try to get it pulled off tonight, so he can do some further investigation on the piece of property.
The councilman for the district to do some investigation of the property.
Yes, he likes the project, but he would like to do some further, I guess legwork on it, you would call it.
Comments or questions by commissioners?
O'Neil, do we need to take action if he's asking to withdraw it?
Well, because of the policy that you, if something comes up, you've got to, in there a policy, there's a policy, but he's here.
If an item is taken off the agenda less than a week before the meeting?
And he's here asking you to allow him to take it off, though.
That's right.
I'll move that it be removed from the agenda. I'll move that it be removed from the agenda.
I'll second, I want to-
I have a motion to allow the request from G and G Land Ventures to reconsider the simple division of property with a variance to be removed from the agenda, by Julio Dumas, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 14, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes for our special meeting of the joint commissions for the River Crossing Plan Unit Development and the Orange Grove Plan Unit Development.